Unless, I think, everyone's here, so it's four o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. First of all, first order of business, it's not on the agenda, is to wish Dolores a happy birthday. I don't propose that we sing to her, but, because my voice is horrible, but if some of the rest of you want to, I'll allow time for that.
Happy birthday. Refrain from saying.
Happy birthday.
Okay, Paul, you requested at last week's board meeting that we have a special meeting today. We haven't spoken, but I took the liberty of preparing what I thought the agenda should be. Is this what you wanted and expected?
I think so. We had confusion and some of the board members have weighed in on that with suggestions, so I think that's, that's the case. And Mr. Chair, I've spoken with various other county officials and I can relay in on that if some questions come up.
Okay, is everyone else, is, does anyone else have any concerns about the agenda or can we proceed? All right, hearing none. Pardon?
When did you send it? I don't seem to have it.
It was attached to the meeting request. The link for this meeting has it. From Randy?
Okay, it's from Randy. Yeah, here they are.
Okay. You okay, Rick? We can go.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. Go on.
All right, so the first order of business is to talk about the Phase Two, which we approved last Thursday. I think that even after the meeting, there was some confusion about the detail of what was approved. Dolores has documented that now and sent that along. The one thing that did develop that I think we need to discuss is that the board thought that, board passed the motion with the start date of May the 26th, Tuesday, and the date was, on Thursday, on Friday, Dolores reported that she did not have all the safety supplies, so changed the date back to June 1st. So I don't know if we need some discussion or comment on that?
If we formally voted on it, do we have to make a formal change to it as well?
Well, that's my question. When we, when she proposed, when she reported on Friday that she didn't have the supplies, I, I said, well, we don't want to jeopardize the safety of the staff. Pull the board, do an email, pull the board to get confirmation. We haven't done that. So do we need to take some action now? Do we want to discuss that?
Mr. Chair, that was my motion, and so I am bothered by that. I've never been in an organization where the officials in charge, which the Board of Trustees are the ultimate policy setters at this case, and we passed a motion, voted on, and the staff did not follow through. Now, in my work history, if I'm told to do something, I bust my rear end to get it done. And so I am disappointed that, that this did not occur, or at least, as you suggested right then, that we were told Friday morning that it wouldn't occur. So those are issues that probably would be addressed at another time, because it's a mute point now. We're not open as we approved, so we need to move forward and get ourselves opened up that this, this board agrees to, and then we can go out in the, and publicize that to the citizens and patrons. Thank you.
Paul, do we need to amend your motion to have the date be June 1st?
You know, we were going to vote on that today, and so I'm, there may be better parliamentarians in here, but I think if we make a motion today on our discussion of when our revised opening is, that will make the prior motion mute, and the minutes may show, Mr. Chair, the discussion point that you just said, that we passed a motion, but the staff did not get back with the board to say that they didn't feel comfortable, or whatever reason is they didn't open. So I think the minutes can reflect why we weren't open without having to go redo that motion. But that's my opinion.
I would, I would agree with that. The minute, the motion ought to be there, and then we ought to report that it didn't happen.
Well, unless, I guess I expected that we do a motion today, we discuss and review the plan, and make a motion to approve the plan for the next phase, since this one ends before the, the Phase Two ends before our next board meeting? Now, I don't know if we, do we need a second motion to amend the original one that you submitted, Paul? Or are you proposing we do it all in one fell swoop?
I, I think we do it all in one fell swoop, and then what we can do is we can reference the prior motion that this new motion, whatever it is, supersedes that motion of last Thursday.
Okay. All right, so do we need to have any further discussion on the second phase? Dolores, do you want to talk to it? Do you have all the supplies you need now?
We have the supplies. I checked with Kevin this morning. The Plexiglas is not onsite at the library, but he says he has it, and it's to be installed tomorrow.
Have we done any publicity yet?
We haven't done a lot of, we haven't done any publicity, because I want this to be kind of a soft opening and publicize it next week.
So are we going, are we going to start off with just two days open? Because I think the county offices on Monday, I think they're either, they're, they're already open like three days a week, possibly going to four next week. Paul, did you check on that? Five? Oh, they're going to five-day opening. Oh.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can share that information. The, the county administrative office will open five days a week with appointment, and you'll have to answer the Tennessee pledge numbers, which, I hope we talk about Tennessee pledge later, but, which, you know, you're not, you're symptom-free, et cetera, and they do take your temperature when you go into the admin center. Let me note that next door to the library at the wellness center, they'll also be asking those questions and checking the temperature, but they are putting people in the wellness center to be on the treadmill and the ellipticals, et cetera. So I think that's, that's a point that the board needs to know what's happening at Parks and Rec.
And the enrichment center is opening Monday.
Well, my question is, could we expand it from two days to three days and then do the library to go on Tuesdays and Thursdays? That was my question.
Dolores, do you want to speak to it or not?
Okay, so do, you're referring to the library to go starting June 1st? Which phase are you thinking of?
Well, kind of, I'm kind of changing it. I kind of said with Phase Two, we, we talked about doing Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, library to go, and then opening up on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which is what we had agreed upon. But now that the county offices are opening, I'd like to switch that myself and open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and do library to go on Tuesdays and Thursdays, since everything else is kind of opening up. That would be my suggestion. And you know, Dolores, I was at, I was telling some of y'all the other day that I was at Home Depot getting paint. They didn't have Plexiglas up, but they put those folding white tables up, which allowed enough room between us, and they could scoot the paint back, like you, if you wanted to scoot the bag, the book back, if your staff was uncomfortable. They didn't wear masks, but, you know, I had on my mask, but that was enough room between us that, or, I was even thinking, if you just had a bag, like today, we went to Taco Bell, and they just pushed it in a plastic container, and you took your things out of that. So that was my suggestion, if you don't get the Plexiglas. I just didn't know if we could change it. That was my question.
So you want in this phase, starting June 1st, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, open, and library to go Tuesday and Thursday?
That would be my suggestion, yes. You could ask everybody else their thoughts.
I think that's a good idea. I would still like to see some weekend time that's available to patrons, especially for those who work. I think a weekend time would be good.
We, we do not know at this point what the ebb and flow is going to be for the staff. We have to provide, we've got to do temperature screening, we have to sign people in, we have to do head counts of folks coming in the building. It's going to tremendously change our workflow. And I'm just not, I'm not sure how that flow is, is going to work. And we also, I mean, we have to make contingency plans for staff getting sick, so I can't have everybody here at the same time.
How much time can it take? How much time did it take to take some temperatures and have a log of when people come and go? I don't understand that, Dolores.
Rick, it's not the amount of time that it takes, it's doing it all day to everybody that comes in the building. And I just, I just don't, I cannot predict yet how many people are going to be entering the building and how much. We're going to have to have three staff out there all the time that we're open. One to take temps, and one to make sure everybody signs in, and one to make sure, one to do.
You know, I think this is going to get faster. It may start off slow, but I think it'll get faster the more you do it, and just jump into it and go. I think it'll end up being faster than at first. You're going to probably find it a little bit awkward. I know Eddie and his group had to start taking temperatures this week, but he said, you know, it just started getting easier. What, your first day was a little awkward, but I think the more you do it, the more comfortable, everybody gets with it. And so, you know, that's just part of, probably our new normal. We're all going to have to get used to having our temperatures taken.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't, I'm concerned about extending the hour switching Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Tuesday, and Thursday. It's not as big of a deal as it would be to expand hours when I'm not quite sure how the ebb and flow of work is going to go.
Until you begin implementing something, there's no way of knowing. So if you start, then you're going to find out.
So in other words, during Phase One, I, I would be apprehensive in Phase One to extend weekend hours.
Phase Two, Dolores?
Because what?
You're already in Phase.
Phase Two.
Okay, but in Phase Two, how about three days a week instead of two physically open? I think that's what Terry's asking. She didn't ask for weekend hours.
I have a quick question. Are we taking, is the staff taking temperatures of patrons, and if so, that's fine, but it's not stated in that document. It needs to be clear.
They will be taking temperatures. I had instruction from board members not to get into details about how we were going to get people in and out of the building, and what we were going to do in the way of crowd control and all of that. But yes, the staff will be taking temperatures, and they will also be signing people in.
If someone has a temperature, are you turning them away?
Well, it's over 100.4.
You're going to tell?
If it's over 100.4, yes.
The staff member's going to tell them they can't enter?
If that particular staff member taking temperature is not comfortable with it, somebody will, someone else will tell them.
At the branches, at the branches as well as the main library?
Yes.
Dolores, will you have signage, because I know we're going through the same thing, and we have like signage we made, so it's visible and they can see it. Do you think that would help? As the patrons come up, do they see it?
Well, I'm going to have, I'm going to have signage about the five questions, I think it's five questions, the Tennessee pledge. I'm going to inundate, I'm going to inundate the doors with signage.
And I'd probably add something about the temperature, so they can see it. If your temperature is over, you may be asked to leave, you'll be required to leave?
We can put that in there.
Well, I appreciate what you said about not getting into the details, and you're right, we decided that. But I do think it needs to be, as Denise was saying, spelled out real clearly, so that people who, in your publicity as well as at the door, so people will know what to expect. And when that's done, I think it would be good to send that information to the board, not necessarily for us to vote on, but for us to be aware of, because people ask me questions, and I like to be able to answer what's going on.
I can send some details in the weekly report tomorrow.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Really, the question is, I think, do we want to start with two days physically open for two weeks, or amend that to be three? Because the proposal after June 15th is we're open, I think, five days, Dolores?
Yes. Oh, you mean in Phase Three?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct. We're open, we're, well, now in Phase Three, we'll be open Monday through Friday, nine to six, and Saturday, nine to noon.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be open six days a week. Do you want, should we start with three, the first two weeks, or two of June? We approved two, but I think Terry is now suggesting, and maybe Paul too, that other county facilities are opening more. Can you manage three days instead of two?
I think if we don't, if we don't change the hours, we would be okay.
That's not what this document says. This document says Monday to Friday, nine to six, Saturday, nine to noon, and Saturday is library to go service.
Well, that was what, Rick, that was what was discussed previously.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but that's the document I got in front of me.
I think that's Phase Three.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We were talking about Phase Three, and we're talking about, well, we're going to be open on Saturday, and this document right here says, yes, we're going to be open on Saturday, but we're going to have library to go service.
I, I think they're talking about Phase Two right now.
I think we're talking about Phase Two.
Okay.
That is in that first page, Rick, there, under Phase Two, the first bold. It's, it's not bullet pointed, it, it's a little hard to read, but.
I was ahead. This is about the third one of these meetings I've been through, where you're going through Phase One, Two, and Three, and it's hard to keep them all separate, so.
So do we need to make a motion about Phase Two to re, redo it, change it? What, what, what are we doing?
I, I think we need a motion to change it if you want to change it from being open physically two days a week to three.
Yes, unless somebody makes a motion and y'all vote on it, it would remain what y'all had approved the last time.
I'll make the motion to change.
I, I have that motion. I have a question before we make the motion. What day would it, what extra day would be open?
Terry, is it Monday, Wednesday, Friday open, and Tuesday, Thursday, library to go?
Yes.
So it'd be really two.
That's what I understand is the discussion.
And then the hours would be nine to six, since there's no weekend yet. And that would be from June 1st, and then it would end on June 12th, and then Phase Three would start on June 15th.
Was there someone who wants to second Terry's motion?
Second, I'll second it.
All right.
Okay, wait, wait a minute. Randy needs to know who's seconding.
I'm sorry, Randy. The motion was made by Terry Hood and Dolores Bratton, seconded the motion. Also, Randy, I apologize. At the start of the meeting, I forgot to take a roll. I did say all board members are present. But I apologize for my oversight, so. So there's a motion on the floor. Do we need further discussion on this?
Mike, can you repeat the motion for me, please? My phone cut out.
The motion, I believe, Terry, is that we are physically open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for patrons to come into the buildings, and library to go service is available Tuesdays, Thursdays. And I'm sorry, my memory's confused too, Rick. Saturday, is there a library to go in the morning, Dolores? No, not, not in the first phase.
Not in Phase Two, no, Phase Three.
Okay, so. Andrea, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we're physically open, nine to six at these locations, and then Tuesday, Thursday, library to go service. Further discussion, further discussion. All right, let's take a vote on this. All in favor, raise your hand.
Andrea, I vote yes.
All right, the motion passes eight to one, Randy, or eight to zero. Sorry, eight, zero. All right, we're done with Phase Two, as far as I, I'm concerned. Should we move on to discussing Phase Three? Which would start on June 15th. Dolores, do you want to, Dolores, do you want to kind of summarize that?
Um, okay, Phase, Phase Three hours would be Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to six p.m., Saturday, nine to noon, and then Saturday would be library to go. College Grove is going to continue to do library to go only. It would be the same for Fairview. They would be open nine to five Saturday, and then Saturday, nine to noon. Nolan's Field would be open nine to six, Saturday, nine to noon. Bethesda would be open Tuesday through Friday, 10 to four, Saturday, 10 to two, with library to go on Saturday at all the locations. Sleepers Fork, Tuesday through Friday, 10 to four, Saturday, 10 to two. And then Saturday, 10 to noon, I mean, Saturday, no, 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 Saturday, 10 to noon would be library to go service. And then during that, during Phase Three, we would, we would have services such as proctoring, notary, ready reference, computer classes, one-on-one instructions. We would provide readers advisory. The large events, such as children's programs and some of the classes that Reference does, will be, will continue to be virtual. And the meeting room will be available to groups less than 25.
Dolores, on Saturday, are you going to be open to the public and offering library to go, or only one? Is it both?
I don't, I don't see, at this point, there's a workflow issue again. I'm not sure that, that the staff can do both at the same time, because both, the library to go is very labor-intensive.
So the library would not be open to the public on Saturday, but you would be offering library to go service. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think that's a bit confusing, and I think if you're going to say you're open, I don't think you should say you're open if you're just doing library to go. You can say library to go only, but I wouldn't use the term open, because it confuses me, and I, I'm kind of trying to keep up with it. And just to the general public, I think that's confusing. So it's just a terminology thing.
When we can pub, when we publicize it, we could say library to go only.
That's better than saying open, I think.
I guess I want to challenge it. Nowhere in our plan are we open physically on Saturday or Sunday. And I'm looking at the Brentwood plan, and they're already open on Saturday to the public and Sunday. Seems like we ought to get there at some point. And in fact, nowhere in plan do we have any evening hours. Now, maybe that's not something to do in June. This is going to last, and when school starts, we may need to have some evening service if the schools are in session, for parents to be able to bring their kids to do research or whatever. So back to Phase Three, we have nothing on weekends where we're physically open. Other libraries are taking that leap of faith.
I think by the time we hit Phase Three, we need some weekend time open. And we do not have an end date on Phase Three. That bothers me. And I think we should be pushing to be fully open and looking at that goal of being fully open and back to normal. And so I think weekend time, and then establishing a time. I don't like leaving that Phase Three open-ended. It can be adjusted later, but I think there needs to be a date on it.
That's my fault, Dolores, not Dolores's. I suggested that we're going to meet again in June. We're going to meet monthly. We'd meet in July, so that we could, you know, we could easily make an adjustment, that it wasn't necessary to try and specify end dates on, on these things that were just two weeks long, so. That's my, my bad, not hers, if you don't like it.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you for clarifying.
I have one concern about the College Grove branch. If, if they are never exposed to any public, they're going to be going from no one to everyone in Phase Four.
I helped with, I have to back up a little bit. I talked with Gordon Hampton this morning, who is head of Parks and Rec. He is not opening any of what he's calling his satellite buildings. And he's not, until the state of Tennessee issues out some senior citizen guidelines, he's not, he's not doing anything regarding any senior citizen programming. And 50 Forward is the only other group in that building, and that's a senior group. And Betty Space is only a little over 300 square feet, and it would be very hard to social distance if somebody comes in to the, that area of the library to use a computer.
Mr. Chair, I confirm that to simplify, that Parks and Rec is not going to open College Grove, the facility.
Thank you.
And as this, this afternoon, I had a meet, had a talk with Gordon this morning. Due to the satellite, the satellite centers not being open, Emily is going to have to come up, we're going to have to come up with a way for Emily's staff to clean the bathrooms and take out the trash, because there's nobody in Parks and Rec.
Okay, back, back to the question. I'm sorry, Andrea. Dolores, I think it'd be simpler for the public if we were physically open, if, when we get to Phase Three, we're open every day, Monday through Friday, from nine to six, and on Saturdays, we're just open from nine to, to one, or whatever it is. No library to go, just physically open. It'd be simpler for people to understand.
Physically open, nine to one on Saturdays.
Yeah, get rid of, I'm not saying that library to go isn't a good service, but get to where, for the public, it's pretty straightforward. If we're open. Yeah, get rid of, I'm not saying that Library to Go isn't a good service, but get to where, for the public, it's pretty straightforward. If we're open, we're open for, we're open for business.
All right, can we, um, can then, can we say, uh, nine to noon for open? At the branches?
Why?
It's because I think it would make it, it would make it easier for, uh, for publicity, and it just makes more sense, it makes more sense in publicity and working with the staff, that it be nine, nine to noon, and seven, nine to one.
Is it really worth bringing people in for three hours? I think in terms of full shifts, and nine to one's a four-hour shift.
We can do, we'll, we can do nine to one.
I, I know I'm not actually on the board, but I'm a little confused. You, you had a motion. Are you now amending that motion, or are you going to change it, or what?
We, for the record, we made a motion and approved it to adjust the second phase, which is from June the first till June the 12th. We're now discussing, we're now talking about our third phase, what's going to happen starting June 15th.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm just like, Rick, I keep getting confused about these phases, sorry.
So do we.
We all do. Well, so let me clarify something about College Grove. So the, um, Bethesda and Leapers Fork, Parks and Rec are not opening, but the libraries are. And College Grove is not opening, but the library's not. Is that correct?
Dolores, I think that's correct because of College Grove facility. Is that right, Dolores? Yeah, she's shaking her head. Because the way that facility is set up, it's more difficult, so, you know, as the others are more segregated, easier to separate Parks and Rec from the building. And, and again, Janine, that's a moving target, as, as we're trying to get everything opened up.
Yeah, well, thank you.
The Pandora's concern about College Grove and then going from nothing to being open, somewhere along the way, before we get to a full opening, we probably, working with Parks and Rec, will have to amend it to allow some physical service in College Grove.
Well, if, if the state, if the state sends down some guidelines for senior citizens tomorrow, I mean, it can change. It, it's like Paul said, it's moving target.
Okay. Can we, do we need to discuss this further, or does somebody want to make a motion for Phase, Phase Three with the modified, with the modification that we're going to be physically open instead of Library to Go on the Saturdays?
Mr. Chair, I'm, in looking at the document in front of us, you're suggesting nine to noon, but we've got Bethesda, Leapers Fork, ten to two. Uh, can you clarify, or are you thinking about changing all the branches that would be open on Saturday from nine to one, or leaving, uh, Bethesda and Leapers Fork at ten to two? Just, just to clarify, so we're on the same page?
I think we need to make it nine to one for everybody on Saturdays.
I think it's easiest for the public if they're all the same. And easier to publicize for people to grasp it.
I agree with that.
I agree, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to clarify.
And so if in Phase Three, we're opening nine to six, Monday through Friday, nine to one on Saturday, where does that leave Library to Go?
Only in College Grove.
Only College Grove.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering if somebody doesn't still feel comfortable coming in, I guess they just won't get a book.
Did you do Library to Go Saturday afternoon? It was only in the morning anyway. How come?
That would be, it would be, it would be too hard to get the, the whole systems in place and get books. Uh, I just don't, I don't think it would work. I could talk to the staff about it, but I don't think it would work. And I also think it would be confusing publicity.
Why do you not think it would work? Why do you not think it would work, Dolores?
Because I think it, there, again, it, it changes, it would change the whole workflow from the morning to the afternoon. You'd have staff getting ready for Library to Go for one o'clock, and then it would not be available to help staff or the public who comes into the building. It would take all day, if it was in the main library, it would take all day to get ready to open Library to Go in the afternoons.
I can share.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, I can share, it's only been three days of experience, but, um, at the Brentwood Library, if you have the book on hold, so you, you, you've, uh, used your online to put a book on hold, the patron have, have been coming in with their mask on, going to the holds station, getting the book, and either self-checking out or going to the, the desk, and that, with three days, uh, has been working smoothly. So that may be an optional somehow to address those that are, uh, you know, over 60, that, I, I'm not sure how we do that, but that may be an option.
Dolores, I think, I think, I think maybe we could, maybe not continue it as Library to Go, but think about how we could serve, if we do have a small number of patrons, or a number of patrons that are still concerned about their physical safety, can we find a way, while we're fully open, to, to, to deal with that small number, whether it's a holds desk that's pretty well segregated, or, uh, we'll bring it out to your car, or something that, that would make sure we don't disenfranchise those people. Don't have to decide right this minute, but I, but I think it's a valid concern that there'll be a small number of people that are going to be fearful of coming in, and we need to try and figure out some way to try and accommodate them.
Are we talking, are we talking about like a Library to Go service upon request?
Curbside pickup, or whatever you want to call it. We got a book for you at the hold desk, but we'll run it out to your car.
Let me, let me talk with the SERC staff. It could be, we could put holds, um, out in the foyer on the tables. We could, we might be able to come up with something like that, so let me, let me talk to the SERC staff about it.
Yeah, you got to control it so somebody else, so Paul can't walk off with my book, but.
Well, that's going to be there. I can tell you right now, that's going to be one of their big concerns.
Well, I know.
And then somebody comes up and grabs it.
In Brentwood and Nashville, they wrap, or at least I think Brentwood does it, I know Nashville does, they wrap it so you can't see the cover, and all it says is like, it would say, uh, 3892. Yeah, so that that way, nobody would be tempted to grab, you know, the John Prishen.
We do that with Library to Go.
Okay, so, probably not too many people would grab something. They wouldn't know what they were getting.
Dolores, does the self-check station at the desk in the main library work?
No, they, uh, the SERC staff was having to, uh, maintenance. It was almost like a fourth checkout station. So they had, they recommended some time ago that we might, we might use.
Uh, maybe, maybe we could use it. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm birdwalking with you. But, I, you know, maybe you could use that checkout station. Other libraries do self-check. Nashville's got it, Brentwood's got it. You know, could we provide some way for people to, to take their book off a shelf, like you do at one of those other libraries, and check it out with limiting your contact with staff? To be safe for both sides.
Mr. Chair, I think part of the question was concern of those that might be more at risk, and in Phase Three, it appears that we're still under the Tennessee pledge items, which would require the staff to, uh, limit the number of people with a, a large number of people in, but also to continue asking the questions and taking the temperature, which gives a little bit of confidence to those entering the library. Uh, and staff will still have the, the gloves and, and face masks on as they greet those coming in. Now, Dolores, if that's not correct, that's what Parks and Rec is doing, and that's what, uh, the Tennessee pledge is calling for. Again, that could change as the governor revises the, the Tennessee pledge and, and his opening process.
That's correct.
So back to the conversation, I think that, short of having a full Library to Go service, is there some other way that you and your staff can go back and think about how we could address these concerns, not, rather than try and solve them right this minute?
I do have one.
I suggested that I, to go back to the staff and talk to them about it.
I do have a question about, and maybe I'm looking at this incorrectly, but we have shorter hours than if we were on our normal schedule before all this chaos happened. So, we still have the same staff working, but on less hours. So, could we not utilize some of those hours to do the Library to Go? Um, I don't know how that works. I wouldn't think, are they still working from home?
Uh, part of the Tennessee pledge is staggering, staggering staff, not have all the staff in the building at the same time. So, it would, it would be hard to practice social distancing at this point if you've got SERC staff working the front desk, and you've also got SERC staff and childrens or someone else working Library to Go. They're all crowded in that same circulation area.
Well, if you have somebody at the door that's taking temperatures and signing people in and counting people, it seems that perhaps they could be the ones to give the Library to Go books to the people who come to check them out, but that's something you all can work out.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion for fit, to open under Phase Three? Five days a week, from nine to six, and Saturdays, nine till one, at all locations but the College Grove.
I'll make the motion.
Your second.
I'm sorry, make the motion.
Denise is making the motion.
Denise, okay.
I'll second it.
Terry seconds.
Here.
Further discussion.
I just, yeah, just because I don't want to have to go back, I'm, I hope y'all don't have to go back and say, wait a minute, wait a minute, I thought that's why we, Dolores had suggested, um, having an actual end date. Are you not putting an end date on here? I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. There is no end date. Right? Is that what was intended?
I don't think it's necessary. We're going to, we're going to review things regularly as we go along and, and adjust accordingly, and if, if we come up with a big problem right away, Dolores can ask that we call a special meeting like this to address it. We're not just putting this on autopilot and walking away.
I just wanted to be sure that everybody was agreeing with that.
Because at some point, I want to push for more weekend hours. Or potential evening hours. We're not done, but we're done for now. I think we'd be, be, uh, a little bit ahead of our, getting the heart, cart ahead of the horse to, to try and figure out too much else right now, because we don't have any frontline experience with physically reopening at all. So let's get some and see where we are when we meet in June, and then determine whether or not further adjustments are in order.
I, I'm fine with there not being an end date at this point.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a question. I just want to clarify. On the document that we received, there were different hours at different branches. For example, Bethesda, ten to four. So are we saying that all the branches will be nine to six and nine to one on Saturday?
If we're going, uh, if we're going to be consistent during this phase, yes, that would be the way it would, it would go. All except for College Grove.
Right.
I'd like to be consistent in this, unless there's a reason, Dolores, you can share with us why we shouldn't be.
I don't, Dolores, I don't, those are not the hours of your normally, are they? Sorry, Dolores, that's not your normal hours, are they?
Now, Bethesda and Leapers Fork are open usually, uh, Tuesday through Saturday.
Well, and also, they didn't like open on Friday at 10 o'clock? I'm looking at the schedule, you know, if I understood correctly, you know, we don't always get the latest up to date, but you had different hours in your branches between, I mean, even variations between the branches, so.
Yes.
I don't know, would y'all want to open up nine to one and then later change it again? Or do you want to open up pretty much what the hours were before? So if, if, say for example, it's.
We can't do that during this phase and be consistent, because we had branches closed on Monday.
Right. Do you want to open up on Monday now, and then later have to close it back down on Monday? That would be hard for the public to keep straight. Like in, like in Leapers Fork, if they're always been open, closed on Monday, people won't expect it to be open.
Yeah, that's, thank you, that's true, that's true. We need to keep the Mondays closed.
What, Monday's closed where? Leapers Fork?
Leapers and Bethesda.
Dolores, but is, is a 10 AM time slot for them to open, and can that be changed to 9 AM at those locations?
Yes, we could do that.
Consistent hours, but we're going to be closed, continue to be closed Monday at Leapers and Bethesda. So I need you to withdraw your motion. I'm going to.
Yeah. Just as somebody who's been around here a long time, and I think a few people have made comments about this, if y'all have had your branches open, like just say at 10 o'clock, for the last 20 years, and now for a month, you open up at nine, you're probably not going to have very many people come, because they won't know that it's open at nine. They'll think, the library's open, it always opens at 10. So let's say you open up one hour early at nine, but then a month later, you go back to your other hours, and that's 10. That's hard for the public to keep making that change.
Okay.
I would recommend you go back to the hours that you had originally. If they opened at 10, open at 10, and then maybe stay open until 6. That was, or whatever they were before. 11 to 7 at Bethesda on Thursday, 9:30 to 5:30, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. In other words, you'd be telling your public, we're pretty much back to normal, except we're closing maybe a little earlier than normal, or something like that, and we're not open on Saturday? I just think it's, it's easier for the public if you remain consistent, what you had before with only a slight reduction, rather than giving them an hour in the morning and then taking it away. What do you think? It's for the public?
Dolores, I think you need to decide this, because if we don't get it right, you're going to be back to me tomorrow wanting to change this, and I'm not going to be happy about it. So I think you need to think long and hard right now. Uh, I don't mean to be a jerk on your birthday, but we need to get it right now.
So what do you, what's the, the guideline then, which you sent us today, as far as the plan? It had all the hours for the different branches and opening times that you was proposing? In Phase Three?
I'm looking at it.
I had Bethesda open Tuesday through Friday, 10 to four. And Saturday, from 10 to two. I had Leapers open Tuesday through Friday, 10 to four, and Saturday, nine to one.
Is, is that pretty much following what you ordinarily did, isn't it, Dolores?
Start time.
Uh, we had the Saturday hours, nine to one, in a, in a previous discussion here. That's very close.
The 10 o'clock start time is what's normal. What if we add the normal start time at 6 o'clock, close at all locations on weekdays?
Do all locations close at 6 a time, at 6 PM? Do all locations close at six at time, at 6 p.m. normally?
No. You had some open until seven.
They have an evening hours. The branch just has one evening hour.
Yeah, like I think Bethesda's open 11 to seven on Thursday. I mean, I just, you're, obviously you're in charge. I, I just think the fewer changes that the public have to absorb, you know, you're open at nine now, you're open at 10 another time, you're back to nine, is, is hard for them to follow. So if you just said, we're going back to the hours that if you got a printed sheet when you signed up for a card or whatever, it's really very close to that, the opening times would probably be easier for them to absorb.
I agree with you, but, but right now, nothing's normal. So, you know, I think if we offer that service and we, because we don't, now, right now we have no end date to that. And they may decide that afterwards, we're gonna stay, you know, they may keep that. But I do like the suggestion that we all say the same and just publicize it and, and put out, you know, those big signs or whatever and, uh, just everybody be consistent and, and they could look on the hours and that, that just, right now, no, nothing's normal. You're gonna have to Google everything. What can I go to? What can I do? So I think we're kind of in that way of our new normal is what can we do if we just ask questions. So right now, I, I would prefer they all be consistently open at the same time. That's just my personal.
What if we make the open time 10 a.m. on all locations? That way it matches Bethesda and Leapers Fork.
That sounds good.
Are you gonna be open at night later then?
Closed on a Monday because I do see that if I, if I can come to you next week on a Monday and then I go on a Monday, once you're back to Tuesday, I'd probably be a little irritated. So I can see Leapers Fork and Bethesda keeping their Mondays closed for now.
I, I agree with that Denise. I was just talking about the start time to, to start the time consistently.
I'm with you on the time.
Now, I, the end time is acceptable for all locations as the end time without confusing the public or drastically changing the hours from what they were before.
So are we saying, um, we're saying 10 to six, Monday through Friday at Main, Fairview and Nolansville, and then 10 to six, Tuesday through Friday at Bethesda and Leapers?
Yes.
Saturday, nine to one at all locations other than College Grove.
Okay. And are we gonna leave off library to go service from this discussion altogether? Or do a library to go service upon request or by appointment or?
I think we stop advertising it and Dolores figures out an alternative.
That's what I, I need to talk to the staff about an alternative.
They'll still have two more weeks of it, right? Because you, you're not gonna start phase three until June the 15th, right?
Right. So we made a change to the motion on the floor, or we're talking about a change. So I'm not the best parliamentarian in the world, but I think we need to get Denise and Terry to withdraw their motion so that we can make a new motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Terry?
I'll second that.
Terry, does somebody want to make another motion? There you go.
Okay, I'll make a motion that all the branches with the exception of Leapers Fork and Bethesda be open 10 to six, Monday through Friday. And then, um, Bethesda and Leapers Fork are closed on Monday and the openings are nine to one on Saturdays for all branches.
Bethesda and Leapers Fork are open 10 to, 10 to six, Tuesday through Friday.
Except they're closed on Monday, Tuesday through Friday.
So all the branches, all the Monday branches would be open 10 to six?
Yes.
Correct.
They're second to that motion.
Second.
Rick, Denise made the motion, Randy and, and Rick Moody seconded it. Further discussion?
To clarify, College Grove stays as it's presented on the sheet we're looking at. Nine to five, library to go only and on phase three, just to clarify. Thank you.
And, and Randy needs some clarification again. Let me make sure that this is right. Monday through Friday, 10 to six for all the Monday branches. Bethesda, Leapers Fork, Tuesday through Friday, 10 to six. And all the branches, this is not College Grove, all the branches besides College Grove open nine to one on Saturday.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
With College Grove being presented Monday through Friday, nine to five for to go services only.
Mr. Paul, are you okay with that?
Right, I, I think it's a good discussion. This is gonna work out. Uh, we'll get through, uh, phase three again. You know, the governor may have a press conference tomorrow and change everything, but we'll just deal with this. This is a good discussion and, uh, I, I thank Dolores and, and Mike, we've, uh, we're all in agreement at this point with this motion on the floor. Thanks.
So we'll, we'll.
Why don't you be mad at me on my birthday?
Not today.
You wait till tomorrow.
Okay, who said, Denise made the motion and who seconded?
I did.
Rick Moody. So Dolores, are you comfortable with this? Because once again, we have this history of agreeing on something and then the next day it changes or it needs to change. Are you comfortable that the staff are gonna be okay with this?
I'm, I'm comfortable that the staff will be okay with this.
All right, so further discussion on this.
I feel like we just cut out hours. That's just my discussion.
Well, that's because, that's because they only do.
You know, Terry, we might've cut out some open time, but one of the points here is staff's gonna need additional time to, to process items, to sanitize them, to sanitize surfaces in the area. So they're, they still have things that they have to do that if it's slow. Right, Dolores could still bring a staff member in at nine o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock in the morning to sanitize things.
Terry, I cut that, I, I suggested cutting that hour or to 10 o'clock to, so it was consistent for all the branches to give some consistency to the process.
I think that works well. I think that works well.
Further discussion? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so let's, for the record, here's what we're voting on. No, all the branches are open with, let's see. Main, Nolansville and Fairview are open Monday through Friday from 10 till six. Bethesda and Leapers Fork are open Tuesday through Friday, 10 to six. All the branches are open Saturday from nine till one and College Grove follows its own schedule with library to go as defined in the document that you mailed to us. Is that correct Denise? Correct, you made the motion. Anyone else clear on that? Any further discussion? If not, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand or your hand and say aye.
Andrea says aye.
All right, is anyone opposed? Dolores and Terry, so the motion passes six to two. Dolores, do you want to talk about anything beyond phase three at this point? Or does it, do any other board members want to talk about anything beyond this?
Um, can I ask a question about the two people that voted against it? Can I ask why they made that choice?
Are you, okay, I don't have, I, I like consistency with everybody with all the branches and because you're not doing Mondays on some of them and then you're cutting back an hour in the morning. I, I just do well with consistency. I, I do understand what Marion said about changing, but maybe after this, maybe they might like Monday open and go back and change Monday altogether. So, you know, I, I just say I like consistently, I like open at nine to six. Once again, if I told my staff to do something like Dolores would just say, hey, this is what we're gonna do and we're gonna learn to get it done. It, this is the time and in the day and age we're having to look and, you know, Dolores and Janine can tell you, when we were teaching school, we had to think outside the box. So we're gonna think outside the box right now and just, they just told you to do it, how you did it, well, you just gotta do it. So we just made it work. And that, that's just mine. I, I felt like we got hours cut and there wasn't consistency and that's what I like.
Thank you, Terry.
Andrea, for me, I'm still not comfortable with, uh, having, I, I know we'll revisit it at the board meeting, the next meeting, uh, with an end date. Uh, I think we could, with some planning, offer more. So therefore I'm holding my thoughts back.
Thank you, Dolores. I just think it's important for us to know like what, what, what's holding people back from voting too. So, or, or to know what their thought process is. I think that helps other people understand where everyone's coming from and to improve in the future. So thank you, I appreciate your thoughts.
I understand, thank you.
Do we want any further discussion of what might happen after this or do we just wait until our board meeting in June and get a report on how this is going?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was gonna, since it's on the agenda, just to let you know, at this time, the county commission is planning on doing the WebEx virtual county commission meeting on June the 8th. So when we look at our eight, June 18th meeting, we may be again on this virtual thing. Again, it depends on how the governor, if he releases the sanction or not. So I wouldn't make that point while you're here. And also to the board and to the, uh, staff, I think the Tennessee pledge is what we're operating under. Uh, I would encourage Dolores and her staff to work with Gordon and the parks. They've got a pretty good system down. They're vetting that with the mayor's office, with H R and with Lisa Culp at the attorney's office. So they follow the Tennessee pledge and keeping those areas open. As you know, that's the exercise of a wellness center, a lot of personal contact, a lot of problems, but they have those open, the indoor pools are open and they're planning on the outdoor pools with social distancing. So you can imagine the labor and the issues that involve for the parks, but they have already got it set up and that'd be a good model, I think, for the library staff to look and then tweak it as it affects the library under the Tennessee pledge guidelines. There was a question raised, a couple of things I've gotten information on regarding the screens, as Dolores said, they will be, uh, the Plexiglas for the checkouts, supposed to be scheduled to install tomorrow. If something comes up, no later than Monday. And then the, uh, the, the concern about the tables was raised that those might be sneezed on and touched and have to be constantly cleaned. Uh, but we do have the ropes that you'll see at the bank or if you've been to the county clerk's office. And so if the library staff thinks that will work, then Kevin has, can get some, uh, if he has to order them within a week or so, if that would help with the keeping of people.
We also got cars.
Right, so.
Got cars and telly.
If, if, if it needs to be a physical barrier, then Kevin can get those for you, Dolores, at the checkout stands. So I think that the questions that were raised regarding those things can, can be handled within a few days or a week or so. Thank you.
About anything or just about that? I, I have a nominating committee question.
Well, that's really, I don't know, Paul, that's out of the scope of the special meeting, so are we allowed?
This, this, this called me regarding the, the opening. We've, we've, we've discussed that, but we can sure talk about it on the 18th, Janine.
Okay.
Send us an email offline.
Okay.
And I'm talking to people on nominating, so I'm, you, your comment at our regular meeting was well taken, so we're, I'm sure we're all thinking about it.
Okay, other discussion? If not, we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for working through this. Bye now.
Thank you.